We're going to go ahead and call the meeting of the Bloomington City Council through order. If everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? Here.
Alderman Sage.
Here.
Alderman Malumoy.
Here.
Alderman Burgess.
Here.
Alderman Painter.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Black.
Here.
Alderman Harmon.
Here.
Alderman Bray.
Here.
Mayor Renner.
Here. Thank you very much. We move to recognitions and appointments, and our very first is recognition and swearing in of the new police chief. I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Rasmussen.
Great. If I could ask the city clerk to come forward and also Assistant Acting Chief Wheeler and Mrs. Wheeler, please. Actually, for the photography, if all of the officers want to come behind us. Come on up, come on.
Come on.
Please, come on up.
Have you to raise your right hand, please. When I say "I," state your name and then repeat after me. I.
I, Clay Wheeler.
Having been appointed to the office of.
Having been appointed to the office of.
Chief of Police.
Chief of Police.
In the city of Bloomington.
In the city of Bloomington.
In the county of McLean, aforesaid.
In the county of McLean, aforesaid.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And faithfully discharge the duties of the office of.
And faithfully discharge the duties of the office of.
Chief of Police.
Chief of Police.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you very much. And now I'm going to ask Mrs. Wheeler to help me take off the rank of the Assistant Police Chief and put on the rank of the Police Chief. There we go. I will shake your hand.
Normally, you can give him a kiss.
Be short and sweet. I just, the main thing is, is we have a great department. They work hard for this community. I'm proud to represent this community. I've spent almost my entire life here. So, really, all I got to do is make sure that they're allowed to do the good work that they do. Thank you.
And now from our other Public Safety Department, recognition of firefighter/paramedic Christopher Moore on successfully completing his probation. Chief? Or Assistant Chief?
Seems like they know what to do.
They know what to do. They know the protocol.
Well, while they're filing in, I'd just like to take a moment, and this is quite a privilege for me to be able to stand in front of you and bring you one of the newer members of our fire department who has completed his 12-month probation. It's usually reserved for the chief, and he had something come up, so it fell to me, and this is a great moment. So, I'd like to tell you something about our newest member here. Firefighter Chris Moore. He is, he grew up in the northwest suburbs of Chicago. We brought him down past I-80, so now he's one of us. He is proud to continue the legacy of fire service in his family. He's got, has his father here, who he served with in Prospect Heights, now in Huntley. Is that my understanding? He had the, Chris has had the privilege to respond to Hurricane Katrina with Mabus Division III. He brings a lot of experience with him. He received a humanitarian award from the Illinois Fire Chiefs. He's a proud father of Cameron, aged four, and he says he feels very blessed to be here, and we are very blessed to have him here. He brings a lot of experience. All the evaluations that have come back from his officers, before they run out of here, brings a lot of experience. His officers have indicated that he is going to be a true asset to this fire department. We're hoping that he stays around for a long, long time. He's got a nice, bright career ahead of him. So, with that, I would present to Madam Clerk.
Cameron, you want to come up here?
Go right up here.
Okay. I'd be happy to raise your right hand. When I say "I," state your name and then repeat after me. I.
Chris. I, Chris Moore.
Thank you. Having been appointed to the office of.
Having been appointed to the office of.
Firefighter/paramedic.
Paramedic.
In the city of Bloomington.
In the city of Bloomington.
In the county of McLean, aforesaid.
In the county of McLean.
Aforesaid.
Aforesaid.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And faithfully discharge the duties of the office of.
And faithfully discharge the duties of.
The office of.
The office of.
Firefighter/paramedic.
Firefighter/paramedic.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next, we have Emergency Medical Services Week, a proclamation, May 20th through 26th, Welcome back.
Thank you.
Proclamation is Emergency Medical Services Week, EMS Strong, Stronger Together, May 20th through 26th, 2018. Whereas Bloomington's emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of the Bloomington Fire Department are ready to provide life-sustaining care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas over the years, the quality of emergency care has dramatically improved the survival and recovery rate of those who's experienced sudden illness or injury, and whereas our citizens benefit daily from the dedicated efforts, knowledge, and skills of the emergency medical team, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, rescue squad workers, firefighters, public safety telecommunications, public information and relations specialists, emergency vehicle maintenance technicians, administrators, educators, disaster response personnel, and those who receive specialized training and continuing education to enhance and maintain their life-saving skills, and whereas injury prevention, public education, and the appropriate use of medical emergency services will help reduce healthcare costs, and whereas to recognize the value and accomplishments of the emergency medical services team, we set aside a special period to observe the contributions of these men and women to our people here in the city of Bloomington in the state of Illinois. Now, therefore, I, Terry Renner, do proclaim Emergency Medical Services Week in the city of Bloomington, and call upon all citizens to observe this period with appropriate programs and activities. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have another proclamation. This is Historic Preservation Month, and, please come forward. Oh, come on up. I'm going to give you this anyway. Okay. Historic Preservation Month, May 2018. Whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability, and whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and ethnic backgrounds, and whereas it's important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people, whereas the city of Bloomington's appointed Historic Preservation Commission is dedicated to the protection and restoration of Bloomington's historic, cultural, and architectural heritage, and whereas This Place Matters is a national campaign that encourages people to celebrate the places that are meaningful to them and to their communities, and Preservation Month is the perfect time to share it with the world. It's co-sponsored by the city of Bloomington, Illinois, and the National Historic Trust, excuse me, Trust for Historic Preservation. Now, therefore, I, Terry Renner, Mayor of Bloomington, do hereby proclaim May 2018 as National Historic Preservation Month in our city, and call upon the people of Bloomington, Illinois, to join their fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing and participating in the special services. Thank you so much, and thank you for all the work that you've done for us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Renner, and the members of the city council. Appreciate it. I am Sherri Grayling. I am currently the chairperson of the Bloomington Historic Preservation Commission, and I am pleased to accept this proclamation on behalf of all those in our community who work tirelessly, year-round, in the interest of preserving and promoting our rich and diverse catalog of irreplaceable historic architectural treasures. At this time, I want to take the opportunity to extend a personal invitation to an event to be held at 5:30 tomorrow, May 15th, at the McLean County Museum of History. This event, sponsored by our Historic Preservation Commission, along with that of the Town of Normal and the leadership of the Old House Society, will showcase this year's award winners in the area of historic preservation, including the bestowing of tandem preservationist of the year awards upon Bloomington's own Brad Williams and Fred Wolrab, in recognition of their lifelong dedication to the preservation of our architectural heritage. Please join us as we continue to celebrate historic preservation in our community.
Thank you very much. Okay, then next, we have some appointments to be recognized of people who have been willing to step forward. Brent Litwiler, Litwiler, excuse me, and Sarah Crowley to the Citizens' Beautification Committee. Are either Brent or Sarah in the crowd? Brent, please stand up. Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate your help. Thank you. Next, Dawn McBride to the Bloomington-Normal Sister City Committee, Japan. Dawn, is Dawn here? We want to give Dawn thank you for her effort. And Kelby Crumston to the Property Maintenance Review Board. Kelby, are you here? I don't see him. Okay. Thank you, Kelby. At this time, we go to public comment, and I just want to clarify that for those of you who are interested in getting some immediate answers, or problem solve, or information, we do have the mayor's open house on Friday before every regular Monday city council meeting, from 4:30 to 5:30. You don't have to make an appointment. You just sit around, come on over to the fishbowl, ask questions, or listen. It doesn't have to deal with anything that's necessarily on the agenda. It could be anything. So, if you want some immediate answers, or if you want to engage in dialogue with your fellow citizens, that's certainly where I would recommend that you come. In terms of public comment, our policy is that, in practice, that we do not respond. So, at this point, you have up to three minutes and to address the council and the public, and so I'm going to go ahead and begin with Dale Strashein. Dale.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm a member.
Oh, pull the microphone towards you. Sorry, it was.
Not used to doing this, so, yeah. Thank you, Dale. Thank you for inviting us here tonight. My name is Dale Strashein. I'm very, very honored to come tonight and speak in support of the Boys and Girls Club project that is before you tonight. I had the real privilege of working there a year and a half ago, and had the privilege of meeting staff, and meeting families, and meeting parents, and meeting all the children that were there, because I served there for about six months. And in that time, I had the opportunity to see the amazing things that happened there. Kids coming to after-school activities where they have an opportunity to have fun, to be with other kids, but to learn, to be tutored, and to be productive citizens. And after talking to the families and listening to them, I was impressed. Almost universal opinions from people at the club, and the families, and the staff, and the board, but also from city of Bloomington people, and town of Normal people, on how much they look forward to seeing the club have a new home someday on the West Side. And I'm just here to say, I think this is a tremendous opportunity for these children to have a good place, close to home, where they can be in an environment where they can grow and learn, and turn to be really productive, successful citizens. And I hope you will speak and vote in support of it tonight, because I think it's a great move forward for the, for the whole community, but obviously for the children of the Boys and Girls Club. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Next is Regina, Regina Nolan.
Good evening. It's Regina.
Regina, okay. I didn't know if you were Canadian.
Nope, I'm full-blooded American. I'm here tonight to talk about the welcoming city ordinance that's more than likely going to be brought up here soon. I would like to say that it's against the law, and you have taken an oath of office to uphold the constitutional law, and putting this ordinance in place is not doing that, in my opinion. There have been some things said by the other groups that have been trying to push this ordinance, that stories about people that have had hard times and struggled, we all have struggles, that they're not, they're afraid that they may not be able to go to the police department and if something is wrong, or if they've been hurt, or if a crime's been committed. There's already something in place for them. It's called a U-VISA, and that they can go to the police department. The U-VISA protects them from being deported, and them and their family have three years to start the process to get, to become an American citizen. So, that just seems like a false presence to me. I don't know, this, it just seems like this is all being brought forth about feelings, and feelings don't trump the law. This has to be done lawfully. In my opinion, I don't think an ordinance is needed. There is nothing that is wrong with what is going on right now, and I see that it could bring trouble in the future if it is passed. Federal funding cuts, ICE showing up, you know, it just causes a lot of problems in the future, from what I see. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And next is Darren Brant. Darren, oh, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, fellow council people. Again, as stated, my name is Darren Brant. I've been a member of the Board of Directors for the Boys and Girls Club for over five years, with total involvement at the club for nearly 15 years. I've seen firsthand the increase in membership at the club, which has caused the club to burst its seams in recent years. Not only is the current building not large enough to accommodate the current number of members, it will obviously not allow for continued increase in enrollment. Additionally, the building is beyond repair, which makes it financially irresponsible for the club to continue to put money into making repairs, or to expand at its current site. Now, by the grace of God, I was born into a middle-class family and didn't have to go without much of anything as a child growing up. However, the kids that attend this club truly need a safe and welcoming place to go, where they are cared for by loving adults who only want what's best for them. The club is also a place where they might receive their only meal of the day during summer months. By voting yes to allowing the Boys and Girls Club to lease or purchase the land at Sunnyside Park, thousands of future kids would be able to benefit from a new facility that would be built within walking distance of many of these kids' homes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jeff Crable, and then Scott Steimerly, and Holly Houska.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Alderman. I guess, first of all, I know Tony Morstatter, and I volunteered at the Boys and Girls Club. It's a great organization, and it's nice to see the new facility coming to fruition. I know I talked to Tony about that, so that's great. Also, I wanted to, I'm sorry, Jeff Crable, Ward eight, also wanted to say how fun Bloomington 101 has been. I wanted to thank Nora Duckowitz for a great program. You really get an idea of what the city is about. You realize that there actually are very competent people that work for the city, that care about the city, and just as an example, Jim Karch, that's maybe one of the most fun times. We go down to the public works facility and learn how to operate the vehicles a little bit, and all the, and people volunteer their time, and so that, so I really have enjoyed that. And so, also, I wanted to go back to the February 12th meeting. I spoke, and I want to, I guess, apologize. We all said heated words, and I think I directed a comment to Alderman Schmidt saying her conduct was shameful, and I apologize for that. And I know it's been tough, but sometimes emotions can get the better of us, and, and, but I do want to address the welcoming city ordinance. We had some people outside protesting tonight, which is great. It's always good, I think, to express yourselves, but, but it's also okay to scrutinize the message a little. So, the message is sanctuary city kills. Cities kill. And I think there's some improper assumptions with that. The first assumption is that sanctuary cities will attract undocumented immigrants. The second assumption is that undocumented immigrants will commit crime and will kill people, and there's no evidence of that. If you noticed a couple weeks ago in the Panograph, there was a column by Esther Cepeda that cited statistics that that's actually incorrect. So, I also, so this is another Bloomington 101 thing. I get to do a mock council meeting this Thursday, and this is what I got to read. But I wanted to point out, 17 seconds, okay. In the logo, it talks about modern progressive style, diversity in our community, community that is friendly and safe, and the mission is to lead, serve, and uplift the city of Bloomington, and the values is to be inclusive. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, Scott Steimerly, and then Holly Huska.
Scott Steimerly, Ward five. I think that, as was mentioned earlier, that Mayor Renner and the council really needs to rethink their position on this sanctuary city, because you took an oath, all of you, to uphold the Constitution of the United States, state of Illinois, to the best of your ability, and Terry, I don't think you're doing it. Because if the sanctuary city ordinance goes through, you know, why wasn't this not put to the voters? And if it goes through, why, you know, what guarantee do you have that the crime is not going to go up? I've got a sister-in-law that she was born in another country. She went through the naturalization process, got her citizenship legally. She didn't crawl under the fence. The roads in this town are absolutely pathetic, and I know you get tired of me hearing this, and Jim gets tired of me talking about this, but the roads are absolutely terrible. There's a hunk out of a road, and I've seen, I've lost a hubcap before, damaged, ruined a tire, just from driving on these lousy roads. And I wonder if they're that way in all of the city, or just where the elite, elite live? You know, I don't know, Terry, but it really begins to make me wonder, where are our priorities? Are they in really what's best for the people, or what's best for a select handful? You know, I know you don't like to hear this, but I really have a concern about the roads in this town, and I have a concern about the sanctuary city ordinance, that you're trying to ram down our throats. And I don't think, like I said before, get the people that get their citizenship legally and don't crawl under the fence. I tell you what, you took up a good share of the time speaking on Friday night, and it may have, without extending the Citizens' Input Meeting, where the people were able to talk, you made your exit in 3,600 seconds. You didn't care if anybody else got to talk, just so Terry got to talk. And I have a problem with that, a big problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Holly Huska.
Hi, my name is Holly Hauska. Thank you for the opportunity to address the council. I am the Resource Development Chair for the Board of Directors for the Boys and Girls Club. It is a volunteer position that I have held for the past three years, and a volunteer position that I will say could equal a full-time job. And I want to share with you the reason that I devote that kind of time to this organization, is that I believe in it so fully. The Boys and Girls Club provides services to youth in our community that are unduplicated by the numerous other wonderful social service agencies and nonprofits that Bloomington has to offer. Our mission to enable young people to reach their full potential as caring, contributing citizens of our community is a pretty powerful one. We have an epidemic We have an epidemic of children at risk in our hometown, and we need to face that truth. We are a, a wonderful community, and there is a, a very unaddressed population on our west side especially, that really needs our help. So thank you for considering this partnership at the Sunnyside property. What the Boys and Girls Club hopes to bring to this partnership is the opportunity to serve more youth. We currently serve close to 1,000, and we would like to open the doors to even more because the need does exist. Statistics tell us that students who are not reading at grade level by the completion of third grade have a 25% more likely chance of dropping out of high school. Those high school dropouts have a 68% greater chance of being incarcerated. So when you couple those statistics, we realize we're not just helping the families and the children of the Boys and Girls Club. This is a community-wide issue that we will all face at some level at some time. This opportunity, though unprecedented, creates a wonderful possible precedent for the city to step up and recognize our underserved, our underprivileged, and to lend a helping hand up, not a handout, to those who are trying very hard to realize the opportunities that some of us have in life. 80% of our parents are in the workforce. 80% of our parents are working one, two, sometimes even three jobs to make ends meet. Our children are coming home as latchkey kids to empty households, and they come to a safe haven at the Boys and Girls Club, where they have adult mentorship, they have educational tutoring and training, they have ACT prep. They have the opportunity to succeed that I think we all want for our youth. So I encourage you greatly to consider this partnership. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Holly.[729.12][729.12](APPLAUSE). Next, we move on to our consent agenda. Are there any items that any member of the council would like to have removed from the consent agenda? Seven L? Seven, I'm sorry, M?
L, L.
L, I'm sorry.
L as in llama.
Llama, okay.[747.38][747.38](LAUGHTER). As in, is your mama a llama? Okay.[751.32][751.32](LAUGHTER). Sorry, seven L.[753.75][753.75](LAUGHTER). I had kids, you know, I can't tell you how many times I've read, is your mama a llama? And Alderman Schmidt, sorry.
I just wanted to make a motion to pass the consent agenda with the exception of seven llama.
Okay, with the exception of seven llama.
Second.
Second by Alderman Howman. If everyone could go ahead and vote then?
I don't think it's, it's not wired up.
Oh, that's because I did not press Start. Okay, the motion carries nine to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. I'm going to go ahead and turn this over. Oh, you just, in order to recuse yourself. I see, right, okay. I've got two people already to, to make the motion on seven llama. Okay, Alderman Black.
Move as presented.
And I'm assuming that your light on is a second?
Yes, it is.
Second by Alderman Howman. Any further discussion? Okay, if everyone will go ahead and vote, I did press Start this time. Motion carries eight to zero. There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. If we could also ask Alderman Nwamwe to come back in. Thank you. We move next to our regular agenda, and we have under seven, eight A, presentation by the, excuse me, and discussion by the Boys and Girls Club of Bloomington Normal for the lease and sale of 3.25 acres of city land inside Sunnyside Park for the development of a new facility requested by the Boys and Girls Club in consultation with the Parks and Rec Department. And we have a, a brief presentation and by our Parks and Rec Facilities Manager, as well as Tony. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and Council tonight. I'm not going to take much time. I'm going to hand it over to the Boys and Girls Club. This is another opportunity for a public-private partnership that we love to bring to you. We've had multiple meetings with the staff and board of the Boys and Girls Club, and for this, for, I guess, the audience as well, Sunnyside Park, and what the land west of Sunnyside Park is, is for the discussion tonight. So with that, I'll have Rex, Tony, and their special speakers come up, and I'll be around during the, after the presentation, answer any questions.
Great, thank you, Jay.
Good evening. I'm Rex Schaefer. I'm the President of Boys and Girls Club Board of Directors, and I'm here to put forth our request to the city. It is, it is for the Boys and Girls Club and the city to enter into an agreement that's acceptable to both for the use of 3.25 acres at the east end of Sunnyside Park, to, for us to build a new facility. That, that lease, that might be in the form of a lease, or it could potentially be in the sale, an outright sale, determined upon what is in the best interest for the city as well as the club. And, and we will leave that to your consideration afterwards. We also, as a part of this proposal, the one item that would, that is currently there that would, would be moved is a softball diamond that is at the east. And what, what the Boys and Girls Club will do as a part of this project is to replace that diamond and grade and cede the land just to the immediate west of the, of the area that we're looking at. The third piece is to main, that we're looking at with this is also that we will maintain the, the flow and detention for water. And lastly, the relocation of existing utilities as, as to sewer lines that are currently where we're going to build. With that, as, as to the presentation, I'm going to introduce our CEO, which is Tony Morstader, who will go on through the presentation. Thank you.
Welcome, Tony.
Thank you. Thank you, Rex, and thank you, Jay, and thank you, Terry, and the council for having us come in and speak with you this evening. As Rex laid it out, and Holly spoke to earlier, our mission is to empower all young people, especially those who need us most, to reach their full potential as caring, trusting, responsible citizens in our community. We envision a community where every one of our young people have an opportunity for a great future. And I appreciate you guys just considering this as an opportunity, not only for our youth, but for our community. As you can see, I, I passed out a packet. I know I had sent something earlier last week, and I had made some modifications to that. But over the past five years, we've seen a lot of growth, dramatic growth, within our organization. As Darren had, had mentioned earlier, we've reached capacity at where we're at. We would love to be able to serve more kids in our community, but we have to do that in a safe and secure way. And we feel like the, the size of our building, the number of youth that we're serving, which is at risk of providing a safe environment, not only for our kids physically, emotionally, but also for our staff and for, for our volunteers. So as you can see in the packet, since 2013, we've increased our, almost doubled our registered members. As Holly had mentioned, we serve just under 1,000 kids in our community, both members and other youth in our community. We've increased our staff. You know, in order to serve more kids, we have to have more trained young adults to help be those role models for our youth. We've got, volunteers haven't changed much, but the, the community is amazing. It, it truly is. My wife and I moved to Bloomington in 2001, and we wanted to raise our family here. And when I started this position last, last January, I really got a true feeling of how blessed we are to live in Bloomington Normal. Our community is amazing, and as you can see, I mean, just 400 volunteers help support our organization. And there's so many more organizations in our community that they support. In addition to that, you can see a dramatic increase in the number of teens that we serve. In 2013, we served 123 teens. Last year, we served over 350 teens in our community. And we want to continue to grow, not only serving teens, but serving RK through fifth graders, or sixth through 11, 10-year-olds. So you can also see a number of meals served. Every one of our members get a meal. When they come in off the bus, they put their backpacks away, they go, they wash their hands. And last year, we served just under 33,000 meals to the youth in our community. Some more statistics about our 2017 membership and families. We're, we're pretty close to about 50% female, 50% male. There's three things that really strike me, and that I, that I, we, as an organization, pride ourselves in, and that's 100% of our members advanced to the next grade level. Over the past three years, that's been consistent. Over the past three years, 100% of our seniors have graduated and moved on to the workforce, to college. And that's, that's what we're about. You know, we love to see that, and we want to continue to strive for that 100% level, or that 100% mark. Back in 2014, the city of Bloomington conducted their, or created their comprehensive plan. And in that comprehensive plan, it was identified that there's a lack of affordable activities, after-school activities for our low-income or disadvantaged youth. And that's what, that's what the Boys and Girls Club is about. It costs us roughly $523 a year to provide programs for our members. We charge our families $25 a year. But we don't turn any families away. So we're here, we appreciate what all of our staff do, and we try, as Darren said earlier, we have to be good stewards of our funds in order to serve more kids. Jay had mentioned earlier, we have been in several meetings with the city of Bloomington, the Parks and Recs, and Cultural Arts Department to discuss the potential of a partnership at Sunnyside Park. What does that look like in the future? The Boys and Girls Club operates in the evening. We're 2:30 to 6:30 in the evening. We're an after-school program. There are some evenings that we have teen club. Tuesdays and Thursdays are a little bit later. But during the day, it's just the administrations, or the administrative staff. So there's an opportunity for partnership, potentially in the future, to provide senior programming, or programming at the Boys and Girls Club during the day. Last Tuesday, we hosted a Sunnyside Neighborhood Meeting at the Boys and Girls Club, just to get a feel for what our neighbors had to say about our vision for a new Boys and Girls Club in our community. And we didn't get a lot of turnout at that meeting, but as we were walking around the neighborhood, knocking door, door to door, speaking with our neighbors, there wasn't a single one of them that were, that was against this idea. They were very appreciative of everything that we've done up to this point, not only for our kids, but for our community. I will say, there was, the only, the only concern that I heard was one of our neighbors that had lived there for 60-plus years, she's, she's concerned of what's going to happen to the building. And we reassured her that, that we're concerned about that too, and, and there, we have other ideas for our current space as well. Again, in the comprehensive plan, this, this slide itself speaks to our mission. The Boys and Girls Club of America was created back in 1860. There were three women in Connecticut who saw a need. They saw young boys running around the neighborhood, having a lack of structured programs, a lack of things that are going to keep them out of trouble. So what they did is they, they formed a club for boys, to give them structured programs for after-school, to keep them out of trouble. And fast forward to, to 2018, and that, that's exactly what we're here to do, is to fulfill that mission, and to provide structured programming to give our kids a bright future, or an opportunity for a bright future. So as we discussed, we talked about Sunnyside Park. This image right here is, is a rough one to see with the glare. But on the corner of Illinois and Erickson Street, there's a softball baseball field. In the five years I've been involved in the Boys and Girls Club, I may have seen that ball diamond used three times, outside of Boys and Girls Club programming. So we walked down with some of the city officials down to the park, and at that time, we felt like that was a future home of the Boys and Girls Club. That's our dream, is to be on the corner of Illinois and Erickson. It's in our neighborhood, it's in the community that we belong in. So that's an aerial view. And then if you look at the shadow here, that would be a potential future Boys and Girls Club. And what we were asked to do is create an updated space needs analysis, and we dreamt big. And we didn't want to have to go back to the drawing board and say, oh, we forgot this, or we, we didn't include this. So, so we looked at everything, and we came up with what our dream looked like. We're also working with city officials, and as we consider this project, Rex had mentioned that we will relocate utilities. We will help align ourselves with the City of Bloomington Comprehensive Plan and redevelop 3.27-plus acres of green space on the far west side of Sunnyside Park. And that would be where the blue kind of curve is, and the yellow line. In addition to that, we're looking at detention and the water flow, and all that will be based and approved through city, city officials and the city engineers. So again, what we're asking of the city council is that you consider leasing or selling 3.27 acres of the east side of Sunnyside Park to the Boys and Girls Club for a future home, not only for our community, but for our kids. Before I, before we close our presentation, I want to introduce the council to our 2017 Youth of the Year, Desi Adams.[1603.66][1603.66](APPLAUSE).
I'm 17 years old, and I've been a member at the club for about 10 years. For a long time, I've been dreaming of having a new building for us to go to. The club is like a second home for me. The club, for me, and for the rest of the kids at the club, they help us in education and developing our own personality and characters. They've helped us as teens get jobs, they help the kids with homework and succeed in school. And I feel like with the new building, we can definitely open up doors to a lot more people and be able to provide that opportunity. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.[1657.33][1657.33](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, I appreciate your time this evening.
If you could hang tight, in case we have some questions. Questions, comments from our council, and Jay as well, perhaps. Alderman Black.
Thank you, thank you. This is more of a question for staff. So this evening, are we looking for a motion to direct staff to work the details out on a sale or a lease?
Yes, and I, I'm going to ask, yeah, Jeff, go ahead and tell what the staff recommended.
Yes, that's, that's right. We're looking for direction tonight to pursue an agreement. I think staff's initial recommendation is it would look more like a, a long-term lease. That way, we would maintain control of the land, we'd put within the lease the, you know, the applicable provisions for the use and our use and, and all of those details. But if the council felt strongly, we could look at other options for that as well. But we are looking for direction from the council as to whether to go back and work out those details with the club.
Thank you.
Alderman Howman.
Oh, don't, don't sit down, Jeff.
All right.
Can you, would you share with us lease versus purchase, and, and why you would suggest one over the other?
Sure. So some of the reasons we've, we've kind of talked about a lease is that we would still own the, the parkland, and that's something that I think has been important to the Parks Department, that we would still technically own the land. And within this lease, we envision terms being worked out about, as the club talked about, you know, we may have some joint use of this building. That would be worked out within the, within the lease, and this would be an opportunity for us to also work out, you know, there will be some, some strange boundaries to this. We've talked about maybe trying to subdivide this, but it's, it's going to be a, kind of a unique boundary line to it as well. So just all in all, the thought being that we would, we would go with the lease. If we went with a sale, you know, that's it, you know, we divest of the property, we'd, we'd have to have some sort of provision in there. Obviously, we, we assume that they're going to be successful in their fundraising, but you know, we'd want some provisions in there about... you know, we'd want some provisions in there about that they'd have to start construction within so many days and, you know, so that, that, in some situation, and this would be true with the lease too, that it would revert back to us if they were not successful in getting this program to go forward. So I'd be happy to answer any other questions, but those were some of the initial thoughts that we had.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Millouangway.
Thank you. I had an opportunity to visit the club with Tony, and I do agree that the, the conditions there are, let me see, I'm trying to find a good word, precarious. But yet, you're doing an excellent job, you know, with, with what you have. So I, I do agree that something needs to be done. I, I wanted to know how many more, you know, kids and teens, you know, are you expecting to serve after this building is built?
Yes, as we look to increase the growth in our community, our, our strategic plan has identified serving at least 350 kids within the next five years. Within the next 10 years, we could potentially serve up to 1,000 kids. Now, that, that is also looking at other strategic directions as well. We do have a location at the Bloomington Junior High School, and we think that there's a, there's opportunity to serve the larger community, North Normal, Northeast Normal, by partnering with some of the schools in that fashion as well.
Thank you. Other questions? Alderman, Matthew, excuse me.
I've had the good fortune to be able to volunteer at the club as well, like Alderman Millouangway, and I, I really appreciate, you know, given that I have no kids, that they let me help in the team zone and not the little kids area. So that was great for me. I could just help with some homework questions and stuff. But I guess this is more a question for Jay, maybe Jeff. Are there any downsides to leasing versus selling? Are there positives, but are there any downsides?
Yeah, so certainly if we lease it, we're still going to be the owner of the property. So if somebody gets hurt on the property, the city's going to be named in that lawsuit. Now, I think our liability and through the, the lease terms would be mitigated. But I, I cannot stand up here and guarantee to you that we would not be part of, of that type of a, of a lawsuit. You also then have a situation where, you know, you've got now, you know, presumably 20, 30 years down the road, a building on here that might be aging or 40 years down the road. And so, you know, the upkeep of that and that type of thing, you're essentially taking on the role of, of a landlord. We have not sat down with the club and started working through all the individual details and, and all of the different things that will be at, at issue here. So that's why in the, on the agenda, we, we kind of table, listed it as a lease and/or sale. We'd like the opportunity to, you know, go back, like I said, our thought at this point is, this probably makes more sense as a lease, based on the arrangement that we want and based on us wanting to maintain, you know, ownership of the underlying parkland. However, if in our details, you know, we go through and we, we come back and say, you know what, this actually is going to make more sense as a, as a sale, we'd come back and, and reckon, you know, work that out with the club and come back and recommend that, that to the council. That said, we did want to get feedback from the council too, to see if, if there's a strong opinion, one way or the other, you know, as to which, which direction we would go. And Jay, I don't know if there's anything you want to add to that?
Could I, could I add one thing to that? And that is that staff is going to work to make sure that this Boys and Girls Club is going to be 150% successful. But you never know what might happen in 50 years from now. And the Parks Master Plan is going to call for us to want to have more green space on the west side rather than less. And so by leasing it, we know that whatever may happen in the future, we're not getting rid of green space we might want, may, may want to have, which is why the staff recommendation is leaning towards a lease rather than a sale.
Well, I would just say then, from my personal preferences, I would still be more supportive of a sale over the lease. But overall, however this shakes out, I'm still highly supportive of the, the concept and the project in general.
Alderwoman Schmidt.
I want to pursue this sale versus lease. In all of our preliminary conversations leading up to tonight, we've talked about it in terms of a lease. This is really a question for Rex and for Tony and maybe Holly, in terms of, you know, are there benefits or negatives in terms of fundraising and, you know, it's, if I, for financing for this, like if you owned it, does that make it easier? Or is the collaboration more?
I think either way you look at it, there's opportunities.
I agree.
I would say whether we lease or purchase, we, Jay and I have spoken, Eric Beal and I have spoken, and, and we are the Parks and Recs program at Sunnyside Park.
Right.
As we look at the future of the Boys and Girls Club, I think that there's still, whether we own the property or we're leasing it from the city, I think there's still opportunity to collaborate and partner at, at the Sunnyside Park.
Right, and it has no effect one way or another in terms of your ability to fundraise because the, the story is powerful.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Alderman Sage.
Thanks. This is a great project, and I know countless hours of work went into this. And, and so my thanks to you, my thanks to the board. And, and I'm in, I'm in favor of it. I, I guess initially, I'm more in favor, I think I'm more in favor of a lease. And Jeff, this is probably a question for you, in terms of, I have maybe some concern about some, some setting a precedent here for future organizations that might want to come and, and purchase land and do that type of thing. I, I think I like a little bit more of the continuity associated with, with the lease in terms of us retaining control. I'm wondering what conversation there was about some potential future impact on other organizations that might come, and, and does a lease provide a little bit more continuity for us?
Yeah, and that's, that's a great point, and that's actually something else that we talked about, and when we talked about a lease, you know, is if we were going to set up any type of a precedent like that. And again, it kind of goes back to not wanting to necessarily divest of the underlying land. But when we talked about this, and, you know, our, and I don't want to speak out of turn for Parks here, but our thought was, if there were other organizations that were going to come and do a multimillion-dollar project that was going to serve the needs of the community like this and improve land and give us, you know, like land, you know, develop the, the ball diamond to the west, that that's something that staff would entertain all day long. And we'll evaluate each proposal, you know, as they come, but we were not really too, too awful afraid of setting up a precedent like this. But again, it's, it's got to be the right situation. You, you know, one of the things we've looked at is, we don't want the city to be out necessarily any money here. This isn't, you know, a situation where we're looking at expending city funds in this situation. And what made this the most appealing was, or one of the, one of the things that made this appealing was this idea that the land to the west could be developed, and we're really not out any green space in this situation. Plus, we've got then a great community partner that's going to be putting up, you know, a multimillion-dollar facility. So from our perspective, we did not feel like this was setting a bad precedent at all.
Okay, again, my thanks.
Okay. At this point, you were looking for a motion that, that is just guiding staff?
Well, we were looking for, for some guidance, but at the risk of causing Jeff to, to do some more work, perhaps what we could do is we could come back next time with an option A and B. That gives you all a chance to think about it, to read over the terms of it, and then we could bring it back with an A and B for you next time.
Okay, I, I think I've got some, some people who are saying that. I wanted, Alderman Millouangway, you were.
No, I'd go for the lease. I mean, let's, let's just settle this right now.
I'll second that.
Okay, great. Okay, I'm going to start very, very quickly. Lease or purchase?
I favor this in the form of lease.
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 I'm fine with either.
Okay.
L as in lease.
Lease.
Yes.
Okay, I think you got, you don't have to worry about two, two options there. Okay. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you, Tony. Thank you for, to the board. Thank you for your community spirit. We move to our next item, 8B. We have consideration of the purchase of Neptune Water Meters. Everybody, hold on to their seats.
That's an exciting one. Good evening, mayor and councilmen. Here to talk about water meters, specifically requesting $900,000 to support our water meter replacement and upgrade program. I'm going to let you look at this slide for a moment while I pass around a couple of handouts. I promise they do not explode and have no sewer in them. The first is a meter. There's water in it from its factory testing, but you'll see it's rotating between the amount of water through it and then the flow rate. The next, I'm going to pass around a nutating disc, which is really inside of most meters, just a larger scale from a bigger meter. I promise the water is clean. I was, well, I was trying to go the direct opposite. And I promise, there's, there's clean water in the meter, and I scrubbed up the nutating disc. So with the disc, the water goes in one side and comes out the other. It spins it and recognizes the amount of water. So you can see the inside with that as well, and I'll leave Jim with the handouts you don't want to touch. I've listed a, a number of things on the slide in front of you. We'll cover the top four tonight. The bottom four are in different programs and parts of the meter program, particularly a fixed-point data collection system, which is very exciting. It's a pilot project. Will create efficiencies, reduce staff time, and also provide information to our consumers. Bench testing, which allows us to focus on meters, some large meter testing. Large meter upgrades, you'll see a chart in the bottom right. You'll see a couple more of those later. You'll see it costs $23,000 to do that, but the return on investment's less than two years. I'll touch base with some other ones here briefly. I will point that cost there is water cost only. As the consumption goes up for water, it also increases sewer and binward. And some might say, great, you've increased our revenue, but you've increased the cost to our customers. Really, that's just allowing people to pay for the water they use, allowing us to keep our rates where they should be and equal for everybody. Here, system outline very briefly in a couple of slides. We have about 31, 32,000 meters in the system. If you think of that, that for a minute, 32,000 meters is quite a bit. You're going to say, Bob, what does $900,000 do for us? And I will say that it's not a new program. This is a continuation of a program. We would expect this to continue for years. We need the, the meters to be upgraded to a certain level of accuracy. And Nick O'Donohue, who's behind me, the meter service superintendent, will fill in the gaps if I misspoke. So last year, we purchased about $900,000 worth of meters. You can see about 1,700 of them, were the 5A by 1/2, which is exactly what we passed around, mostly your residential meters, with the smattering of a couple hundred of other kinds. We continue to add meters to our system, which are users, which is a good thing. But the nationwide trend is people use less water, so it kind of offsets itself. Distribution, meter distribution size, again, most of them reside in the residential range. Most of them are pretty aged. If you look at the bottom right-hand graph, let that catch your attention there, you've got about 13,000 meters that are 15 years or older. You're going to ask me at one point, what's the life expectancy of a meter? I'm going to tell you it's between 10 and 20 years generally. I'll walk you through some graphs here in a little bit and kind of pinpoint a little bit more of what we're focused on. But you can see we have a lot of older meters in our system. Water consumption by sector, the high blue one is residential. The middle one is commercial inside the city, which comprises most of our water use. You'll see we only have one, one 8-inch meter. If your eyes are eagle eyes, top right-hand graph, there's a very low blue line skirting around the bottom. It dives down to nothing, late 2015. You can guess where that meter was. Accuracy, testing. So generally, meters slow down. This is a number of different ways to say what that is, to show what that is. I pulled some samples and go by, top left is a meter testing program about 1,500 meters, the same size I passed around, showing that at low flows, it drops off more dramatically than at medium and high flows. Those flow rates are based on industry standard test guidelines, and it's based on the amount of water through them. So though we like to talk in years, really, it's focused on amount of water, the water quality and the pressure of the water system. So over time, it will slow down. Bottom, bottom right, rule of thumb is about a half a percent a year. So if you've got a 10-year-old meter, it's 5% low in accuracy. And a $15 million of collected revenue, 5% is hundreds of thousands of dollars. And that's just for the water alone. Extrapolate that to sewer and binward as well. We're supposed to, by industry standard, test our meters based on a certain frequency with the size of the meter. We have in the budget, if we go back to my second slide, a meter test bench upgrade. We have a meter test bench. It's not operational, it hasn't been for a lot of years. So we're going to bring that back in-house, be able to test those, be able to focus more on the meters we need to test and replace based on our results. Right now, if somebody asks us to test it, they don't trust the guidelines or response we're giving them, we'll send it out of house, pay somebody to test it, send the reports to us. We hear a lot about RF meter conversions. You can see over time, we've dramatically dropped. The good news is we have about 550 left to go. The bad news is, we knock on doors, we drop flyers, we do mailers, we make phone calls. We have gotten people to stop responding. That translates dramatically to our level of effort and efficiency of our staff. So these are 550-ish dots that we have to walk door to door, essentially basement wall to basement wall, and touch our reader to the pad on every house. So it takes our time, takes our effort, and reduces the ability to do other things effectively. We'll still continue to focus on that, but if you'd like to encourage your constituents to call the water department, we'd love to switch out their meter. Meter changes. So in addition to the RF change outs, we simply change out meters based on age, based on composition of the meters. I mean, a lot of our meters are older. They still, they're lead-free based on the definition at the time, but really still had lead in those meter bodies as well, so we look to trade those out. You can see in the bottom left, the, the staff really put a focus the first quarter of 2018 and did more than they did in all of 2017. So as our change outs kind of nosedive, we picked it up by trying to replace our old Couple of final thoughts. We talked a little bit about residential. These are more, top left is restaurant, institution. You can see these cost a little bit more as far as meter costs, but the return on investment is generally under two years. So we can upgrade our meters, collect the revenue we should be collecting, again, feed some more revenue into our other services, and everybody's paying their fair share. We're targeting some of our large meters the last couple of years, and have been able to make some great strides in that. Doesn't always make everybody happy, but again, we explain to them they're paying for what they're using, and they've probably got a great discount over the past three, four, five, eight, 10 years. With that, I give you back two minutes and answer any questions.
Under budget.
Under budget.
Alderwoman Hellman.
Thanks. Mr. Yell, would it be pop, is there some way of forcing the 600 households that don't have the newer meters? Is there some way of?
There is.
Strong-arming them?
There is. Alderman Hellman, there is. We, we try to approach most everything with the point of our heart in the middle of what we do.
I appreciate that.
And we've been doing a great effort of trying to outreach, but we're getting to a point, and I learned in my early career to put slides after the questions and answers, so bear with me here. So if you see anything you want me to come back to, I will. But here's a couple ordinance quotes. Top left is probably the most pertinent. It essentially says that if somebody fails to schedule a meeting with us when we request or doesn't show up or cancels the meeting, we have the ability to shut their water off until we can get in and change the meter.
That's, whoa, I wasn't quite expecting that response.
We're, we're trying not to get to that point, but that's essentially, we do have that right to do that, to access our part of the system and upgrade it. So to date, we have not suggested that in recent years to the city manager or anybody else to do that. But yes, there's that opportunity if we can't get the last few hundred.
It does add to our personnel expenses if we have to go door to door to.
Dramatically. It adds man days every, every week or every month to our effort to be able to collect the data we need.
Thank you.
Alderman Matthew.
So a question first is, as we're going to these wireless meters, are we going to get to the point where people will have like the My Bloomington app and they can see their water usage? I've gotten, I'm only asking, I've had constituents who have found out the hard way that they have a leaking toilet that develops or something of that nature when their water bill spikes suddenly at the end of the month. And I'm, you know, I'm just thinking from a technology point of view, can we get a, are we moving towards a system where, hey, you're all of a sudden 50% above your normal usage, is there something wrong in your house? Is there, are we heading in that direction at all?
Yes, we are. This year, we've included, I believe it's $50,000 in the capital equipment budget for the first pilot project for our fixed-point data collectors. So essentially, what we'll do is we'll, we'll put fixed-point collection system, so we, essentially, we hopefully not have to walk up to everybody's houses eventually. We don't have to drive routes. We can set it to collect data every, every day. With that, allows us to upgrade our meter software, because right now, our meter software doesn't have the ability to do that. We can dump the data we have in for contact information. It can recognize trends. It can recognize trends, it can recognize differences, and automatically notify people with robo-calls or emails of a, of a consumption increase. Right now, at best, we're collecting data once a month. We download it to an obsolete system, which is uploaded to another obsolete system, and then we manually print reports, and sometimes we're weeks after we've actually billed it that we have a chance to look through if we have the personnel to do it. So in short answer, yes, we're working towards that. There'll be more to come after this, but we have monies this fiscal year to start that project.
Perfect. Okay, then.
Could I add one thing to that, please? I'm doing a letter right now to a, to a prominent citizen who had a bill that was in the many thousands of dollars range. And just, and, and that's why moving forward with this kind of thing is very important. And just to show you, we have probably 300 to 500 requests every month for, for leak adjustments of some sort, and that would be in the $50 to $100 range. Right now, what the ordinance provides for is that whatever the water goes through the meter, the resident pays for. We also have probably 20 to 30 a month that would be approaching the $1,000 level, and occasionally, we have some that are the many thousand dollars level. So something like this is very important to the residents if we can identify a spike ahead of time. And we're also talking about working for a leak adjustment insurance program that would kind of pay for some of those if someone had a leak that they didn't know about for a month or two. So we're working on both of those things to try to reduce this problem, because it is really a serious drain on some of our residents.
Okay. I'd like to make the motion that we approve this as presented.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Sage, and then Alderwoman Schmidt.
I just, I'm still reflecting on Alderman Hellman's comments and thinking about that scatter graph of where these are located. Are many of them rentals?
I don't believe we dove into the details enough to determine.
I'm just thinking about this with my landlord hat on, that, you know, I may have tenants who pay their own water bills, but when it comes to letting somebody come into the building and actually swap out meters, I mean, you might do a little bit of cross-mapping there and see if you might get to the property owner as opposed.
My understanding is when we mail the letters, we try to get it to the tenant and the landlord as well, but.
But you get them both.
Yes. And we're also gonna use that map to identify those locations and target when people walk around as well.
Okay. Okay. Is there any other, no other question? There aren't any other questions? Go ahead and vote on the motion as presented. Motion carries nine to zero. There are no names to announce. Madam Clerk, thank you very much, Mr. Yale. And we move right along to item 8C, consideration of an agreement with VenueWorks for the solicitation of new naming rights for the Pepsi Ice Center as requested by the Parks and Recreation and Cultural Arts Department. And we have a very brief presentation by Lynn Cannon, who's on her way up.
With the boot on.
Are you doing okay?
Yeah, I had a little stepping incident, and I have a broken heel, but I'll be fine. Thank you.
Hope it wasn't on ice.
No, no. No, ice is not the, it was actual walking. Anyway, we're here. Jay Teslov and Michael Hearn-Brock came to us and asked if we would be able to assist them in seeking a new naming rights partner for the Pepsi Ice Center. And so we've got a wonderful salesperson on staff at the arena, and he is out talking to businesses every single day, and we would love to add this as an opportunity that we would be able to sell for the city, and that is why we are here and looking for approval.
Okay. Questions, comments, or a motion?
Motion.
Yeah.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve this as presented.
Approve, excuse me, motion for approval by Alderwoman Schmidt, it's her second.
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Painter. Any further discussion? Yes, Alderwoman Hellman.
I have a question, and does the Pepsi Ice Center come under the VenueWorks contract already?
No, it does not.
It does not?
No.
Then I don't have another question.
It is purely run by the Parks Department.
Okay. Then that answers, I don't need to go further. Thank you.
Okay. All right. If you'll go ahead and vote. The motion carries nine to zero. There are no names to announce. Madam Clerk, thank you, Ms. Cannon. Thank you. Now we move to our last item on our regular agenda for this evening, and that's consideration of resolution dissolving the intergovernmental agreement for operation of Scott, excuse me, John M. Scott healthcare program approved, approving new bylaws and directing the filing of amended trust documents as requested by the administration and legal documents. And I'm going to go ahead and turn this over to our corporate counsel, Mr. Jurgens, who has 10 minutes, and we've got about 20 minutes budgeted as discussion.
And I will try not to take the entire 10 minutes, Mayor. Just wanted to briefly run through the changes and the latest in this. As the council knows, we've been working on this and talking about this. It'll actually be two years in August. So we've gone through a lot of process, a lot of different variations, and a lot of different discussion. So we're happy tonight to actually bring back something for you to act on, a resolution that we'll get to here in a second. This, the resolution will, among other things, authorize the attorney for the trust, Tom Herr, to file a petition to amend the declaration of trust. And the primary change that the new trust will provide is that it's going to go to a grants-only system. And that's something that the council has talked about for a, a number of months now, and that'll be what the new declaration of trust provides. The, the petition will also authorize, under this new declaration of trust, new, new bylaws for the Scott Commission. The bylaws will provide that the commission's made up of 11 members, the same number that is currently made up of, but it changes the positions a little bit. There'll be five from various healthcare professions, multiple disciplines like primary care and mental health. There'll be experts in finance, grant administration, those that help the underserved populations. So before, we had commission members coming from different organizations within the community, so there's a little bit of a shift now to kind of the different disciplines out there that, that primarily work with the trust. According to the original will, there will still be one representative from the Second Presbyterian Church, and then the ability to appoint one member to represent the township supervisor or the township supervisor. The bylaws.
Just to clarify, those are the two that would not be approved by the council.
No, they're all approved by the council.
Including the Second Presbyterian Church.
Yeah, as a perfunctory matter, yes.
Thank you.
So the, the bylaws provide that the commission and the trust, the amended declaration of trust, provide that the commission will be a purely advisory body to you as the trustee of the Scott Commission, or of the Scott Commission Trust. They will have various functions to recommend changes in the bylaws, appointments and annual budget, investments. They'll be responsible for helping to identify unmet community needs. They'll recommend allocation of funds to the various organizations and community initiatives, and any other matters that you want them to take up. So they will make these recommendations to you as the trustee. You will then make the final decisions. The, the bylaws provide that the city administrator, or the, we will have a city administrator as kind of that staff liaison. So Jennifer Tony, who's the current grants administrator, and she's here tonight, if there are specific questions, she'll take over as kind of the role of the administrator of this program. So she'll be kind of the conduit between the commission. The commission will recommend this budget or these grants. She'll then come present this to you as the trustee, and you will make that final decision as to how to proceed with that budget with those grants, et cetera. The commission members will serve for three-year terms. They can also appoint ad hoc members themselves to kind of help if there's a need in a certain area. These appointments to the commission will be made by resolution, a formal resolution that'll come forward and will be approved by the council. And we also continue to have language in there that the township is an eligible grant recipient. You might remember, there was some discussion about, you know, some unmet needs, some direct service needs that Township Supervisor Skilrid discussed with you, and so she can, she can put that in as an eligible grant to be considered, and then you could potentially fund that as direct services that would come directly from the township. So again, the functionality of this, how this is gonna work, again, we'll have a grants coordinator that will serve as the administrative staff. We will keep track of that person's time, and we've estimated that to be about $50 per hour, that we will then seek for reimbursement from the trust. So in theory, the city's not going to be out any money for doing these services for the trust. The trust will pay the city back for that. So what are the next steps? The resolution tonight, it dissolves the current intergovernmental agreement with the City of Bloomington Township. That intergovernmental agreement provides that the township is the one that administers the program, the trust program. So this, this resolution will approve the dissolution of that IGA. It also directs Tom Herr as the attorney for the trust to file a petition to amend the declaration of trust with the circuit court. That'll go to court. The resolution also approves, approves the new John M. Scott Commission bylaws. We will then, once that's approved, and, and that's all contingent upon the circuit court approving this, this requested relief, we will then transition that to the city's new grant coordinator. We will also be, we're in the process right now of negotiating a new IGA with the township for some of the services that are in the existing IGA that we're dissolving, like mowing and snow removal at the township building, also the provision of some IT services, some lighting work that Jim Karch and Public Works provides. So we'll come back within the next few weeks with a new IGA that talks about those other services that are not related to the John M. Scott Trust. So that is kind of the big picture overview. A lot of people here, if you have specific questions, I believe Deb Skilred, is she still here?
Yes, Deb's here.
There she is. We also have some representatives from the commission as well as Tom Herr. So be happy to answer any questions, but if the council is comfortable with this and you want to move forward, approve the resolution, and that will get the ball started.
Okay. Questions? Alderwoman Schmidt.
Just a clarification, maybe two slides ago where you talked, one before that, yeah. So this says that we may appoint one member to represent the township, and that the township is an eligible grant recipient, but the commission serves, actually serves all of McLean County, right?
That's right.
And then in the staff memo, it says that the trustee may also appoint one member to represent the township, township supervisor for City of Bloomington, or someone else to, or another designee that would represent McLean County Township Supervisor. So they don't quite line up. So I just wanted a little clarification about that.
Yeah, so I abbreviated that last bullet point.
Okay.
Represent township, so right now, Deb Skilred serves the, you've got the township supervisor serving on the commission, so you can, you can continue with that. You could, you know, if you want somebody else from Bloomington Township on there, or if you want somebody else to represent all of the townships in McLean County. Or if you want to say to the supervisor here, you know, you need to represent all of them and, and that type of thing. So it's, it's really pretty open-ended.
Okay. And then also, in the very last bullet point, it says township is an eligible grant recipient. Are all townships eligible, or only the City of Bloomington?
Yes, technically, anybody that was gonna provide the services, you know, that were, that are allowed under the trust, they could apply for a grant.
I see.
The reason that we spelled that out specifically for Bloomington Township is because there was some discussion on this council about, you know, there was this debate about, you know, the need for some, some continued direct services, but also, you know, maybe it made more sense to go to the grants only. So we just wanted to keep in there that, at the forefront, that, you know, if there are some direct services that Bloomington Township, you know, believes, you know, should be provided, that they may be applying for a grant. So, you know, it, it doesn't necessarily give them any special rights. They would still have to go through the process, make the case, you guys would formally have to approve that. But yeah, in theory, any township, you know, could apply for a similar grant.
And, and this would begin with the current fiscal year that we're in right now?
That's right. Yeah, and I don't want to misspeak on this, but you've already, we've already approved a budget.
Right.
For this, this fiscal year. But I think what they would look at doing is going back, they might amend that, they might, you know, once the court approves this, there might be some additional changes to the existing budget.
Other questions or a motion? Yeah.
With this, I mean, we're gonna have a grants administrator, but can we put any sort of language into this once we're getting going? For instance, you know, one of the big things going right now is when you get a grant, it's having to report back health outcomes from those grants. I mean, can we make those things like conditions that, you know, if you're awarded a grant, you can get, we, we expect to see health outcomes reported back on, from that process?
Jennifer, yes.
That would be a part of developing the grant objective, yeah.
Okay. That's all I had, then. Then I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Several seconds. Second by Alderwoman Schmidt. Any, Alderwoman Bray.
Just a quick question. The timing of this in regards to the approval by the circuit court, what could we expect there? Jeff.
Tom, do you have a timeframe on this?
As soon as we get a hearing, so it all depends on the judge's schedule. We also have pending some annual reports, and so it's a last hearing. The Attorney General has to be notified. We typically give them 30 days, although sometimes they'll enter their appearance and consent to this. So I would envision a minimum of 30 to 60 days, but it could be sooner if we were lucky to record it.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Okay. Oops. If you could go ahead and vote.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff. The motion carries nine to zero. There are no names to announce. Madam Clerk. Okay. At this point, we move to city manager's discussion. Mr. Rasmussen.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and members of the city council. I have two things for you today. The first thing that I wanted to do is not go over the Scott Trust again. But to go, go through the upcoming events that we have, and we've doubled this up this time because we have not only included the things that we have in, in the downtown, but also the thing that Bloomington Parks and Recreation is also putting out. I'm gonna spread that into two, two slides, so it's a little bit bigger, and then I'll also include that every two weeks in the, in the weekly update, so you have a hard copy of it, and we'll make sure that goes out on the, on the city's website, because there are a lot of things going on, and when people say there's nothing going on in Bloomington, you can look at this, and there's more things than you can possibly do. So there's a lot of things downtown and in the City of Bloomington to do. Okay, great. The second thing I wanted to do was to give you an update on, on our solid waste pickup. As you know, we went to a spring and a fall. We completed this in, in these last two weeks now. There are a lot of questions out there and some things happening, but I'd like to generally consider that to have been a successful effort, and I'm gonna ask Jim Karch here to come up and give us a quick rundown on that and answer any questions you may have now that that period of time is over.
I'll just give a collaborative, ah, it feels good to be done with the first spring collection that we have completed. Full credit to our crews, they worked so hard. We, we took everybody we had, and we treated it like a snow event, is what we said. We just threw every piece of equipment we had at it, we did, we treated it almost like an emergency. Had five to six crews every day, you know, four, four dump trucks per loader. Again, that's a lot of equipment and a lot of manpower being put toward it. But within seven days, we got through the entire town. Actually, by the beginning of the seventh day, we were done, so it almost closed to six days. Really great effort. We're gonna be celebrating our department, and then we're also going to be figuring out, how can we do it better? We're now looking for lessons learned, how can we communicate even better? We, we were using some innovative things this time that were deemed very successful, such as electronic message boards. We placed some of those out on some of our major roads, non-state routes, as a way to really try to get that message out, in addition to, you know, water bill inserts. You know, the media was wonderful, you know, the Panograph, all of the different news stations also had a lot of good coverage about it. So we had a lot of it out there. So moving forward, we're also taking a lot of effort to try to educate people, because we understand citizens, this is a change for them. So we are, we have stickers now that we're putting on anything out for bulk, and then also doing a door hanger, so that if a citizen puts out a couch, a chair, something they, also doing a door hanger, so that if a citizen puts out a couch, a chair, something they didn't know about this, all of this stuff that's happened, they hadn't read any of it, or seen any of it, they'll see that, they'll look at it, and it'll say, in two weeks, we'll be back, and we'll bill you the $25. You can take it off the curb, and here's where you can take it. So that gives them the opportunity, get that grace period, so that there's less of a hit, gives people the opportunity to self-correct, and provides us a direct education moment. So this is a really good, really good way that we're reaching people directly. It's hard for them to miss that, and so we see this as the best way that we can get the word out. The other thing I just really want to encourage, we are also driving the My Bloomington app, because every effort is being done now. Everybody, 99% of folks have smartphones now. Not everybody, you know, again, I'm not trying to insult our flip phone folks, but still. The smartphones are so prevalent, you can get this on the Android, the iPhones, all of those different ones. The My Bloomington app is the way to drive that. That lessens call volume, allows for people to take pictures. It also allows them to have their email address, and we'll give them updates. We'll give them an update when we collect it, we'll give them an update when it's been billed. There's a lot of interaction that can happen through that My Bloomington app. So questions at this time? We'd be glad to entertain them, and we're trying to do the best we can with the changes in the program.
I'm going to ask Jim two questions here, which I think will help. One is, we reported in the Panograph that during this first spring pickup, we picked up 15% of the tonnage that we had done all last year. Well, if we have a spring and a fall pickup, that would be 15% in the spring and 15% in the fall. That makes 30%. What happens to the other 70%?
Well, thankfully, we're hoping that people will continue to, you know, go ahead and use our Citizen Convenience Center. To the boon of everyone's existence, I am determined to do a ribbon-cutting when we get that thing looking beautiful.
I'll be there.
Only one of you might show up, but by golly, it's going to be wonderful, because we are wrapping the fence, we're beautifying it, we're adding greenery, we're adding signage that matches the downtown, all the themes that we have in the downtown. We're trying to make this a place where people can go and become educated, and find, and also partner with our nonprofits. We have to work with the EPA. I didn't want to jump the gun and allow our nonprofits to get there before the EPA approved it, but we're working toward even EPA approval, and we think this is a great way to say, don't just throw it out, allow other people to reuse it. So we're really trying to find ways to improve the way that we look at waste.
You're not going to be serving mocha lattes?
Yeah, I'll try to juggle if I can. I can do balloon animals.
And I'm thinking what we're getting on that other 70% is people will be taking care of it themselves. They'll be taking it to the Citizens' Convenience Spot, or they'll be paying to have it be picked up for $25 a pickup. In any case, it's less work for the Public Works Department to do, which means less tax dollars are going out to pay for that. My second question to Jim was, how many complaints have you got so far?
We actually have-- it's hard to believe, we've had less complaints than we thought. We have not been-- we've been very pleased with the amount of, actually, some positive feedback we've had. Some people, of course, we normally get complaints on a daily basis, so this, we're seeing about the regular type of trend that we've had. So this huge upsurge might still be coming when people realize, wow, I missed it. There will still be some folks that this has been a tough change for, but overall, this has been a very positive change. We think the communication has been very robust. We think that, you know, a lot of people have heard about it, and a lot of people do understand.
I just want to point out that they're not called flip phones anymore. They're now called feature phones.
I'll still call them flip phones, but I understand, that's right.
Or Citizens' Convenience Phones.
That's right.
Okay.
Block phones, that's right.
Anything else?
Thank you very much.
Anything else, Steve? Okay. The only thing that I would like to do, there were a couple things on the consent agenda I just wanted to call people's attention to, and that is obviously our annual WGLT concert that we'll be having in the heart of beautiful, sparkling downtown Bloomington, and also something that one of our downtown establishments has decided to propose, and that is a rock, the 200 Block Concert Series. And so we have more things going on downtown, and we're very happy to hear that, very happy to see that, in terms of it being our cultural center of core, but also, obviously, for economic development reasons. The only other thing else that I want to remind everybody on is that two weeks from today is Memorial Day, and if you're around and would like to walk, we don't have to walk arm-in-arm, but we will be walking from the Law &amp; Justice Center down to Miller Park, and if you want to join us in the parade, I appreciate that. That's all I have, Aldermen and Women. Alderwoman Schmidt?
Steve, sometime in the next two or three city manager updates, could you give us an update on the one-stop-shop?
Absolutely, and I think we need to do a lot of work on that, and there has been a little bit of lack of progress there, and maybe some backsliding, and we got to reinvigorate that one.
You have new staff since that was first imagined, but I think, you know, people